Hey, ¿qué pasa, Calixco? Welcome back to the podcast. Before we begin today, I want to take the time to thank the Yeps family for letting me record today's episode here at Calixco Brewing Company. Also, I want to make sure that I say this, this is not an endorsement, it's just a conversation with my guest today. I just try to be as unbiased as I can whenever it's election season. I just have a conversation with candidates so that you get to know them and, you know, make your decision based on, you know, you know how you feel about the person that's running. Today, we have somebody that's running for Calixco City Council for the two-year term. She's a local businesswoman, she's a former Marine, and now, like I said, candidate for Calixco City Council. My guest is Anna Norikumbo, thank you for being here today.
Thank you for having me.
Before we get into, you know, the campaign and all that, can you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Yes, so I moved down to Calixco when I was 12. We, I grew up in Salinas, but I was born in Mexicali, but since we were very young, we moved to Salinas and we moved down here when I was 12. I went to junior high, high school here, I'm a bulldog. Right after high school, I joined the military, so I joined the Marines. I did a four-year term, I was stationed in Yuma, and my last year, I was stationed in Okinawa, Japan. And then I decided I wanted to, you know, not continue in the military. So after my term ended, I came back home and I had already started going to school while I was in, when I was in Okinawa, I was going to school over there. So then when I came back, I continued my studies and started working at a power plant here in Imperial, back in the time, back in the day. And then just kept going to school. When I met my husband, you know, we kinda, he's always been like really good in the kitchen. So we had the idea of, you know, starting a restaurant in Mexicali, which is called La Resaca. We started in Mexicali. And then from there, we moved it, we closed over there and then we moved it over here. And then from there, you know, we got into the restaurant business. So I finished school, I have my bachelor's in international business and I have a master's in business administration. And we've been in the service industry for 20 years. And so recently, I, after everything that happened this year with the recall and there were these two vacant seats out there, I decided that I was going to run for one of the two seats for the two-year term. Mainly because I am, I am, you know, very active in my business and I also still have two young, school-aged children. So I wanted to try it out for the two years to see, because I'm the type of person that commits 100% to whatever I'm doing. So I want to make sure that I have that balance that I need in, you know, a political life and in my business and in my family. Which is why I decided to run for the two-year term, also because I've been seeing other problems in our city for a few years now. And, you know, sometimes I ask myself, you know, why can't we just do these things? They just seem so simple, right? And I don't have a clear answer, so the only way I can figure it out is if I, you know, dive in and try to help out, help my city and to get out of the situation that it's in.
Yeah, and you know, one of my questions was, why the two-year term? You answered, because, I mean, you know, you being a business owner here in Calixco, being involved and, you know, you, I've seen you go to the city council meetings and then you mentioned, you know, how you think to yourself like, oh, why are they doing this? It's so simple, like, you know, when you think about it, it's plain and simple, but, you know, the wheels of bureaucracy turn so slowly. You know, in two years, like, you feel like you'll be able to accomplish, you know?
I believe I can, maybe, you know, not on my dream list, but I am a person that always works with deadlines. And when we start on a project or say, for example, if I get elected and I'm a council member and we have something to do that the citizens are asking for, have been asking for many years already and we need to, you know, obviously, check what the priorities are, you know, list the priorities that the citizens want to get done. But like I said, I'm a person of timelines and deadlines. So even though I have two years to prove that it can be done, I will also expect, you know, that the staff that work in the city also meet those timelines and those deadlines. So, for example, in my, in my business, I'll go to my management staff and if something needs to get done, I tell them, okay, this is what I need you to do, you tell me by when it'll get done. So I let them tell me, I don't go and I tell them, you're gonna get it done by this day. I ask them, you tell me when it's gonna get done. Oh, it'll be done by, you know, so-and-so day, okay, and I expect it to get done by that day. That's why I leave it to them to tell me. So that's, I think that's the kind of different dynamic that I'm gonna bring to the city is that a lot of times, there is bureaucracy, but sometimes it's not just bureaucracy. It's just, you know, the status quo and people just thinking that, oh, you know, nobody's really paying attention, so I'm just, you know, gonna lag. And, you know, I'm not the type of person that, I'm always looking for something to do.
Yeah, especially now that, you know, the city hall is understaffed. It's another big issue as to why things aren't getting done. Like I mentioned before we started recording, I'm part of the planning commission. We don't have a planning director, so we don't have any meetings. You know, there's a lot of projects that are, you know, just sitting there because nobody's there to, you know, move them along. You know, when it comes to prioritizing, you know, where to hire, like, where do you see the biggest need in the city?
So, that's a good question, because prioritizing what positions to hire for me, in my personal experience, has always been from the top down. And the reason I say that is because a person that is skilled to be in a higher position knows how to do a lot more things. Because a lot of times, they came or they worked their way from the bottom up. So you can, you can likely expect a person in a higher position to know how to do the stuff that his or her staff should be able to do. But you can't expect the same from a lower staff member to know how to do with what his boss, you know, has to do or the skillset that they have. So definitely, that's, every time they ask me, what's the first thing you're gonna do? I always say staffing. I need to see, obviously, not me, because the job of a council member is not to micromanage and it's not to do the daily operations of the city. But it is to hire, you know, that city manager that is gonna do that and is going to, for example, in my view, when that comes, because I believe right now, it's open, right? They're hiring, they're hiring a city manager. So if I get elected, I might have, you know, the opportunity to be able to help select the new city manager. So for me, it's gonna be very important, not only what that city manager knows as far as experience, because, you know, it needs to be someone that, we have a lot of problems, so it needs to be someone that has the experience, that has the knowledge in public management, but also that has the right attitude. Because in a city like this, we need to have the right attitude, we need to be positive about things. It needs to be a person that says, you know, how can it be done? Not, how can it not be done? Because a lot of people will, you'll tell them like, hey, we need to do this, and they'll say, oh, no, no, that's too hard, or we don't have the funding. It's like, no, tell me how it can be done. I can tell you how it cannot be done, but tell me how it can, so let's look for ways. And that's happened in my personal life. We opened a, three years ago, we opened our restaurants and two event centers in El Centro. And it was in their downtown and that building had been abandoned for over 30 years. So it wasn't even for sale. I saw the building and I said, what a beautiful building, you know, it's perfect, it's the size that we need. So there was no for sale, no for lease signs, so I took it upon myself to find out who the owner was. You know, I called the city, I called the county, and finally, I got ahold of the owner and he was willing to sell. So we started everything, the negotiations and everything to get the building. But when we started doing the budgeting and the amount that we would need from the lender to get that building up and running, a lot of people kept telling me, you're not gonna do it with that budget. And I kept telling them, yes, I will, and yes, I did. So I'm the type of person that, you know, you can tell me, all around me, no, it's not gonna happen, there's no way. And, you know, I'm fortunate enough that, you know, I'm very persistent and I don't stop until it gets done. And that's why I think that the right attitude is what the city needs, starting from us, from the council members to the city manager, to the department heads and everybody else, especially the people that are gonna interact with the citizens.
Yeah, and you know, I can attest to, you know, what you're saying, where you're like, you're, you know, you don't stop till it's completed. The day may, it was a day before you opened your new place. It was around, I don't know, like, 6:00? And then I went to the gym, like, around 10:30, came out of the gym, like, around midnight, they were still working out there and I'm sure you were still out there. So I was like, yeah, I mean, you can tell that you're...
We were there till 5:00. Yeah, that, that, two days before, we said, okay, we're gonna open on Thursday. And everybody's like, there's no way we can open on Thursday. And I said, yes, we are, we're gonna do this, 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 and that, we're gonna bring more people in. And we opened on Thursday. We finished at 5:00 AM, but we opened at 7:00. So like I said, it's the attitude, it's the mindset, it can be done. For me, it's just not, there's no no in my world, you know? Not in a bad way to where it's like, oh, it's gonna get done, no, it's just, you know, there's always a way and I always look for the way.
You know, seeing how there's, you know, actually, five seats open, there's two for two years and then there's two for three years, two, four years. You know, what do you see? I mean, because it's really up in the air as to like, how the council is gonna look like. You know, ideally, what would be your dream council or like? I mean, obviously, you know, we're supposed to have Miss Thailand here today, but she had an emergency with her daughter, so...
Yeah, so part of the reason why Lisa Thailand and I are running together and we're Team Calixco is because we know on the council, you need majority votes to get things done and get things moving. And I knew that from the beginning and I know that in the past, there's been so many things that could easily get done, but they don't get done because of egos, people's egos and sometimes people want to be the protagonist and, you know, they didn't, they didn't come up with that idea, so now they're not gonna go with it and stuff like that. And it's sad, it really is. I think my biggest trait is to be a team builder and I know that you can't do things alone. So like what we were talking about, my business, you know, we, I got a bunch of people in and everybody was doing stuff and I was giving direction and then, I think when you came in, I was putting up wallpaper or...
You were in the counter.
Yeah, so it's like, and I'll get, my hands dirty too, it's not that I just go in. So I don't expect people to do things that I'm not willing to do. So with that said, Lisa and I, we're running as a team so that we know. And the reason why we decided to run as a team, because we don't know each other from more than eight months ago, maybe. But when we met and we discussed about, we had a little, you know, conversation about what we believe the city needed to move forward. And our ideas and our plans were very similar. So that's why we said, you know what? And I told her, because you know how she's an appointed council member now. She was having second thoughts and she was thinking, well, you know, bureaucracy, you know, I want to work faster and I can't and, you know, it gets frustrating. So I told her, you know what, Lisa, if you run, I'll run with you and we'll run as a team and we'll run together. But we have to do something, it's like, we're already as low as we can go. So that's the reason why we decided to run. So we need a third member for votes. Obviously, on our bracket, on the two-year bracket, then, you know, it would have to be her and I. On the four-year bracket, I don't want to say any names, because I'm gonna tell you why. Because, like I said, we need to work in a team, right? So if I say certain names and then they don't get elected, then another person might get mad that, oh, you know, she never considered me and now they're not gonna want to work with us. And, but I think out of the eight that are there, I think half, half of the eight, we could work with. The other half, I think have, I think their ideas are too far away from where we think the city needs to go. And then others are probably just stubborn people that we think are not gonna want to work as a team.
You know, we mentioned Lisa and she was the planning director for the city and now she's an appointed city council member. And you have this business mindset, you know, with both of you. How do you think, you know, both of your knowledge and expertise can, you know?
Yeah, we definitely complement each other. Because just recently, you know, in the interactions that we've had, and we talked about this yesterday's interview, that what she knows about public work, you know, I don't know a lot about it. She knows a lot about, you know, the policies and regulations and the law on building, you know, methods you can use to do certain things that probably someone would say, no, you can't do it. But there are ways and she's very versed on that. Me, I've also told her like, well, why don't we do it this way? Is there something, you know, that doesn't allow us to do it this way? She says, no, and I think that's a great idea. So I think, you know, my private sector perspective and her public sector perspective definitely complement each other. And not just us two, but I think the entire council, it's good that, I know that there's some candidates that have, you know, law enforcement background, others have like an education, teaching background. So I think a variety of all of that would work. That way, you know, when, it's very important that when we get things presented to us to make, to vote on, that we know that we don't just rely on what somebody else is telling us. And that's one thing that I have, that I'm very research-oriented. So even though I might not be an expert in a certain area, I will definitely research on it before anything. I'm always looking stuff up. So, yeah, like, you know, I didn't know how to put wallpaper and I learned how to put wallpaper. So, you know, that's, it's just, sometimes you just need to, not, not sometimes, you always need to know exactly what you're gonna vote on, especially if you're talking about, you know, people's money, because that's pretty much what you're doing as a council member. You are administering the people's money.
A big chunk of our budget is through tax revenue. You know, you have a business, you have two businesses here. You also have some in El Centro. When you compare, you know, the process of getting a business license, you know, doing all these things that, that opening a business and titles, when you compare here from El Centro, you know, what's the biggest difference? Why are a lot of people, you know, moving somewhere else in the valley instead of opening here?
Well, we also have a business in Yuma. And I can tell you that from Calixco, El Centro and Yuma, it's two different worlds. It was so easy to open in Yuma, it was so easy to open in El Centro. You know, the county is very easy to work with, so is the city. Unfortunately, Calixco, I'll have to tell you, when I went to apply for the permitting for this new restaurant, the lady at the counter, and I know, and it's not her fault, right? But that's just how it is right now, I guess, because they're understaffed. But she told me, oh, it's gonna be four to six weeks to review, you know, your application. And I said, four to six weeks? You know, imagine, well, and I'm leasing this building, right? So I thought immediately, four to six weeks, that's a rent and a half, you know? And just without doing anything, because you can't start to do any work unless it's, your application has been approved. So I understand that's how a lot of people start and, you know, because you don't have that time to waste. Sometimes, not sometimes, many times, especially in the small businesses, people have a limited budget and they can't wait six weeks. So that's definitely something we need to work on. Also, I believe one of my business licenses here is between $900 to $1,000 a year. And I pay, I think I paid like $59 in El Centro for one building that has two event centers and two restaurants. And here in one restaurant, I paid close to $1,000, over there, I paid like $59 the first year that we opened. So it's crazy and that's why people are leaving.
What are they based on, how much did you pay for it?
So in Calixco, it's based on your projected sales. If you're a new business, you have to project what your sales are gonna be. So it's a percentage of that. And in El Centro, I think they base it, they have a tier. So if you believe you're gonna sell this certain amount, it's this amount. But if you believe you're gonna sell from here up to infinity, it's a smaller amount and that's it. It's not, it's not a percentage of your sales. And here it is. So the more you sell, the more you pay. So that definitely needs to get fixed. But primarily, I think the timing, because, you know, you're talking about, in my case, $900 permit, annual permit. But when you're talking about rent, you know, a commercial property is much more than that. So if you're talking about a month and a half to wait on the approval of a permit application, you're talking a lot more money. So I think that takes more priority, you know, we need to streamline the permitting process, make it faster so that, you know, people can open faster. So for me, that's one of the departments that definitely needs to get staffed right away, because the building department is, you know, it's the moneymaker in any city. Because the more businesses you have open, the more sales tax revenue you get coming in. And the more jobs and, you know...
More spending.
Right, more jobs, that's what grows the economy, so definitely, that's a priority.
Yeah, I mean, you gotta invest money to make money.
Right.
So, yeah, yeah, because I applied for business license and I was like, well, you know...
Yeah, it's crazy. And, you know, and the girl that I met at the counter, you know, she was very nice and it's nothing against them, but, you know, their hands are tied and it's like that, definitely, you know, it's not the way to go. It's not, it's not a business-friendly process, you know? You kind of think like, do you really want me to open a business here? You know, with kind of like the, not the treatment, but it's just the way, you know, people are anxious and people, like I said, have limited resources and they can't be, you know, just sitting around not doing anything. So for sure, that's something that needs to get fixed.
Hey, guys, sorry for the interruption, but I wanted to take this time to thank my sponsors. My friend Jake, Camilo Garcia, Eddie Lopez from Cultivating Ideas. This year's new sponsor, The Valley's Champ, Giorre Boyar. And finally, I want to thank Will Torres and the whole VSN team, the valley's source for Imperial Valley Sports. And if you want to become a sponsor, you can go to anchor.fm/quepasacalixco. Hit the support button in the middle of the page and you can sponsor the podcast from 99 cents to up to $10 a month. Your sponsorship helps the podcast sound and look better and also reach out more people by doing paid promotions. I want to thank all my sponsors once again, and now back to the show. Something that gets brought up a lot of times when, you know, when there's people that are running that are maybe somebody's family member or you have a business, you know, oh, you already have an agenda because you're a business owner here, you know, you're, you're out there because you're gonna benefit from being a city council member.
Right.
I mean, and in reality, you know, anybody that runs for city council in a way has an agenda, because if I'm a citizen that I feel that the cities, you know, the streets, that's gonna be my agenda, you know? I want to make whatever, you as a business owner, you have an agenda to, I mean, we're talking about it right now, or like, you want to streamline the process of being, becoming a business owner, because you know what it is. What are, you know, what are some of your thoughts when people bring, you know, that kind of thing up?
So I guess they kind of, I understand the question, I understand why people would think that. And especially because it happens a lot everywhere throughout, you know? There's, sometimes you have some people in government positions that, you know, take advantage of that position. My case and, you know, my personality and the way I am, for me, you know, if you're gonna open, you know, 200 restaurants that are gonna compete with me, that's fine. You know, I'm all for it, because 200 restaurants are gonna create more jobs and those jobs are gonna, you know, put money in people's pockets and they're gonna come, you know, to our restaurants and to everybody else's place. And I'm just talking about restaurants, because that's what we do. But competition is good and that's something that they taught us in business school. That, you know, competition, a lot of people look at it as something negative, but it's something very good, because it always keeps you on your feet. When you know something, something might affect you, you know, like an exterior circumstance, oh, they're gonna open, you know? Well, then what you do is you're like, okay, well, you always strive to be, you know, the better business, because if you're gonna compete for the sales, that's what you have to do. And, you know, let the best man win and that's the way I see it. I have no issue with that, I also have no issue on recusing myself. If at any point, somebody says, hey, you shouldn't vote on this, you know, I won't vote on it, I have no issue with it. Maybe I'll give my opinion on something, but believe me, it'll be a good opinion, because I'm pro-business for everyone. I know that that's, that's the way that you make the economy better. That's the only way, pretty much, by creating jobs, opening shops, selling, you know, generating sales tax. So that's why I'm very, that's one of my priorities. But before that, my top priority, like I mentioned, is building a good team. Because if you don't have a good team in city hall, it's like in my business. If I, I can't have these separate locations if I didn't have a good team. I, we have, my husband and I have built really good teams in our business to where we could leave them and they're running alone. And that's how we're able to open more. If I didn't have that, I couldn't, I would have to be sitting there watching, you know, like a hot 24 hours and wouldn't have a life. So I think that's something good that I bring to the table. I'm able to, like I said, you have to have, the right people are always not just about their skillset, it's also a lot about their attitude, they have to have the right attitude. They have to have the attitude where you, you know, that go-getter, that yes, I'm gonna do it, yes, it can be done. And unfortunately, I think, and I'm not gonna go too much into it, but I think that the previous city manager that we had, I think, I didn't know her personally, but from what I saw in the meetings and stuff, I thought she was a very smart woman, very, very smart woman. Worked a lot, maybe workaholic, I don't know, she was always working. I just think she didn't have the right attitude. And when you don't have the right attitude in that type of position, you know, it goes down to, it passes on to your staff, to the morale, and it passes on to the people that you're serving, you know, when you go in and nobody will smile at you. You know, even though you're going to pay your water bill and you're upset because you have to, you know, write a check, but at least give them a smile, you know? And that wasn't happening, so...
I mean, it's funny that you bring up water, that's one of the biggest issues, you know, that is being talked about in Calixco. You know, the water rates, my, or are they going, I mean, I don't really...
No, so, so that was a big issue and I think it was a very big, it was a scare tactic used by some candidates. And they actually had this video going out about me that I was for the water rate and increase. And I'm not, because the people that know, I pay a lot of water at home, I pay water in my businesses, so I definitely don't want my bills to increase. So what I know about the water is that there was a study that was initiated last year. I believe it was in April of last year, of 2023. So the council members that were there then, they paid a consultant, they hired an outside consultant to pay for a water fee study and it cost the people $80,000 for this consultant. So they had this, this study done, which pretty much said, you need to increase your water rate by 20%. 20%, that's a lot, because if you talk about, you know, what your pay gets increased, it's not even close to that, you know? Most people's pay. You know, people that work maybe in the county or the city might get a 0.5 or a 1% increase per year and then it caps off. So anyway, the recommendation was to do a 20% increase. What they wanted to do was, they wanted to bring in the cost of some repairs that the city said was needed to the water plant. They wanted to put that in, that was the reason for the increase. And then there were also quite a few fines that the city received by the state for shutting some people's water off during COVID. So I'm not too sure if they were just fines or if there were also lawsuits there. But, so they wanted to bundle all that... But um, so they wanted to bundle all that in and make us pay for that. Now, the repairs, obviously, you know, things break down or get older, become obsolete and need repairs and they need upgrades. The problem here is that those repairs were supposed to have done with the last increase five years ago. The same exact repairs that they pointed out five years ago were the same exact repairs that they needed this time around. So in other words, they increased our rate, but they never fixed the issues. So um, you know, I think they wanted to kinda cover up what they did and didn't do. So um, they they paid for this study. Um, the recall happened in April. So they had this study there done and everything for some months now, the back, the council members back then. But they never brought it forward. Um, and so after they left and they appointed the two new council members, uh, which was Lisa was one of them and Victor, like, I'd be the other one. They had this study there up in the air that the people paid for. So when you're talking about items, you know, that where you use the people's money, you have to do some something with it, right? Okay, well, you know, why did this happen? Well, there was a study. So there is a process that has to be done anytime um, public fees are gonna be incremented or or, you know, there needs to be a justification. So they do studies and there has to be a process where they do um, public hearings. So that the people can come out and say like, no, we don't want it to be increased, right? So that's what was happening. So there were public hearings, but from what I know, the intent was never to increase the water rate. The intent of the new council members was just to fulfill the process because you had to, because that expenditure had been made. So it was to fulfill the process and say, we're not gonna vote, we're not gonna vote to increase it, so we're done with it. The study was done, we're not approving it. But since we're in election season, a lot of candidates use that. And they said, oh, they wanna increase the water rate. Um, they said that I had um, uh, said that I wanted to, which I didn't. There was a little video that where somebody asked me like, are you for it? And I said, you know, I kinda like dissect and I say, okay, well, these are the repairs, you know, these are the lawsuits. And then here we have, you know, the increase to the minimum wage and inflation. And so I said, maybe in this section where there's an increase to the minimum wage and inflation, it could justify a water rate increase. Because from now until five years ago, what was it like, eleven dollars an hour, ten dollars an hour? And now we're like at seventeen. So that's, and I know that because I, you know, I'm a business owner and and I pay wages. So that's where I said, well, if you're talking about inflation and minimum wage, then maybe there it it might be justified. Of course, not twenty percent, maybe a point five percent or, but that wasn't even the case, you know, it was, I was just answering a question that somebody asked me. So then they said that, oh, Diana wants to increase the rate. It's crazy, you know, I would never wanna increase my own bills. So, yeah, um, I think it was manipulated by, you know, the same. And this is funny because that whole situation was blown out of proportion by the same council members that approved for the water rate study. So it was brought on by, you know, Renia and Manzanare, the guys that got recalled. They approved it with the past council members and then later came out and told everybody, oh, my god. The new council members wanna increase the water when it was them that started it, so they never said anything about it. But that's the.
The whole story, man, yeah, cuz I mean, uh, yeah, sometimes, you know, I don't pay too much attention because it gets kind of tiring, like. It's like.
I'm boring.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think, I don't know if if it's boring, but it's just like, um, so much back and forth. And nothing gets done. So just like, I'll be watching and it's like six thirty, seven and my wife will go to the other room and do something.
About the long meetings?
Yeah, and then she'll come back and she's like, you're still watching that? I'm like, yeah. Like, what what they're talking about, like, well, the same thing they've been talking about for the last hour.
Yeah. Yeah, that was very important. And there was another issue that happened with the parking meters. So so um, the past council members that got recalled also wanted to increase the parking meter rate. And so they, they, it's the same thing, there's that process that I was talking about. You have to do public hearings, you have to get the citizens involved, everybody affected involved, and they didn't do that. They jumped it. And by law, you have to ha- go through all the process that I just mentioned to you about the water rate, which is why they did it, to fulfill, you know, what the law states on that. But with the parking meters, they jumped it. And they increased the parking meters without going through the process. So when the new council came in, they said, wait a minute, you know, when was the public hearing held? Why was it wasn't held? Well, you know, what's going on? So they immediately went in, I don't know if you noticed that they're greenback, yeah, because they said, we, no, they can't be, you know, increased. So I think that the new council is trying to do things right. Some people don't notice it or don't see it. Because unfortunately, a lot of people just go off of what they hear, you know, um, very, I know that that, and this is kinda what what I'm happy about, that lately, with the whole recall situation, a lot more people are paying attention. Um, and and that's a good thing, you know, and even if there's certain people that believe what others are saying that isn't true. I I I'm happy that people are getting involved, you know, and maybe eventually later they'll know what the actual facts are. But at least they're, you know, awake now and 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 they're getting involved in, you know, in their city situation. Because it affects us all, you know, we could have better roads, we could have greener parks, we can have so many things. And instead, you know, they spent money on other things that are not priorities for our citizens.
Um, do you, do you feel that the whole recall thing kinda like split the city up? Like, I don't, cuz, and the reason I ask you is this because my friend's running for school board. And him and his wife have been canvassing and um, she's like, you know, I keep, I keep getting asked the same question. Are you in favor or or against, you know, the recall, the, you know, the group, you know?
It definitely, it definitely split the city up, but for the wrong reasons. I think that a lot of people believed, and even the people that were recalled to this day, believe that they were recalled because of, you know, their their sexual uh orientation. And I think that they took offense to that, but then the other side also took offense to that. Because, you know, the the side that was against the recall, you know, they said, well, you know, we live in, you know, twenty twenty four, you know, sexual orientation doesn't matter anymore, you know, um, here and throughout most of the world. But then the other side was thinking the same, it's like, yeah, it doesn't matter. So, you know, we wanna recall you because you are not making the decisions that we need for a city. You know, for example, there was some money that was brought down by the feds, um, not brought down, but they gave to all the cities during COVID. It was called ARPA funds. So um, we could have done so many things that that we need to, you know, so many repairs that we need to do. But instead, you know, they decided that we're gonna give away a million dollars to um, essential workers three years after the pandemic, you know, so it's like, you know, the majority, I'm not gonna say everyone, because I know that's not the case. But the majority of the people, you know, were, received some sort of assistance during COVID. So the reason why um, the federal government sent this money down was precisely because it it shut down businesses, right? So the cities weren't receiving all these sales tax revenue to continue operating. So they sent this money so that, you know, the 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 city couldn't offset, you know, the loss that it got by receiving no sales tax. So instead of saying, okay, well, we we have a shutdown fire station on the west side or we have, you know, all these holes on the on the roads, you know, the, all our 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 parks are, you know, they don't have any lights. There's no grass, you know, they're dried up. Instead of investing in stuff like that, they decided to give a million dollars away. And this is a city that, you know, is is on the deficit most of the time. And why do you give that money away, right? That's how I got involved, you know, I said, what? It makes no sense. Why? You know, it kinda sounds like you're trying to buy off, you know, either votes or or sympathy from people. But that's, that's not what you do with, you know, with money. This is not money that's gonna be, you know, dropping every, you know, two years. So that's why I got involved. And um, so I got accused, and I'm talking about me personally, for example, I was for the recall, but then because of that specific situation. And there's proof, because the first time that I go to a city council meeting last year was to say, don't spend ARPA money on this, you know, invest in our parks, invest in the fire station. You know, invest in our roads, do whatever you can with that money, but don't give it away. And it's there on record. Um, I voted for um, Councilmember Ureña, he was a mayor back then. So I, you know, I I have no issue with sexual orientation. I voted for him knowing about, knowing his sexual orientation. But then after the fact, we all get told, you know, that, you know, we're we're homophobic, you know, that that this is, you know, a a town that lives in the past and it's not accepting and welcoming. And I took offense to that too. So the same way that they took offense, thinking that that we wanted them recalled because of that, we also took offense. Because, you know, you don't get to just do whatever you want only because of your sexual orientation. You don't get to use that, you know, and 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 for every little thing, you know, say, oh, it's because, you know, I'm this or it's because I'm that, every time you you make a wrong decision. Um, do you understand what I mean by that? Like, not use it as an excuse. So I feel that that's what started happening, you know, you're using it as an excuse. And 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 it's still that way, you know, there's still people, now that they're running again, there's still people that think that's what it was about. Um, for me, it wasn't. Um, and and it's unfortunately, unfortunately, we, I believe we are divided. But I think that after these elections, um, we'll we'll be able to kinda mend things and come back together. And whether, and you know what, e- even if they get elected again, I'm willing to work. Because I'm I'm here, willing to work with whoever gets elected by the people. Because if that's who the people want as a representative, you know, I'm good. Um, and like I said, I don't wanna be there two years of my time, you know, not being able to get anything done because I'm gonna say, oh, no, I'm not gonna work with you because I voted to recall you. That's not the case. If whoever the people vote for, um, and if I get elected, I'm gonna do everything in my power to work with them.
Even if they, e- even if they're part of the of your council, you know, you're you're willing to set those differences.
Yes, yes, for sure. Because, like I said, I mean, I like, I'm a person, honestly, I like my free time. I like to travel, you know, I like to do things and and um, I'm I'm not gonna go in there just to waste my time. So whoever is there, I'm gonna work with. If they don't wanna work with me, you know, I'm, then I have a different task. And that task is to try to convince them to work with me or to meet in the middle. Because I, you know, I'm a type that that knows you, you have to build win-win, you know, situations and it's not all for me and it's not all for you. You know, we have to meet in the middle. We're all different people, we all have different um, ways of thinking. So I understand that. So, yeah, I'm willing to work with anyone that gets elected. But, you know, if if it comes to a point where, for whatever God forbid reason, you know, the five that get there, absolutely nobody wants to work, I'm gonna work with everyone, but I can't speak for the rest, right? So if if they just don't wanna work and it's happened, you know, then I'll be there for two years and then I'll be out my merry way. But if it works, you know, if it works and we're able to do something for our city and the people still want me there, then, you know, I'll stay there as long as they want me, or at least until I can kinda, you know, steer the ship in the right direction and just leave it there so that the new people coming in in the future do it the right way.
So if you see any, you know, uh, positive outcomes in these two years, you, you know, you you wouldn't run for that fourth term, you know, the following?
If if, if I, if we have good, you know, if we're able to do something good with our city and if there's no good candidates that I think are gonna continue with the work that that we've, you know, accomplished, then, you know, I would have to speak to my husband because obviously I'm not, I'm not a one one man show. Um, and if he supports me, um, then, yeah, I would gladly do it if the people still want want me to continue. Um, and obviously, if I have the house and and everything um to do it. But, yeah, I mean, but I'm positive, you know, I know we're gonna get things done and I know people are gonna want some more, but we'll see what happens, yeah.
Um, something that that I I saw you and Lisa talk about was, um, you know, these um multi-use, you know, buildings downtown. I I mean, Imperial has done it with, you know, have that that little area on Main Street. You know, you know, what are the other other things that you would like to see in downtown that, you know, I mean, I, cuz, you know, Callexico is not the only downtown that's.
Right, yeah. Um, you know, I've been very blessed and fortunate, like I said, I like to travel. And the downtown issues, you know, the historical area issues in every city, e- everybody's gone through the same thing, you know. Eventually, that place, you know, is is old and and then every, all the new buildings are somewhere else and then it starts to get abandoned. And then you start getting vagrants and then you start getting, you know, um, like criminal activity and stuff because it's abandoned, right? It's dark, abandoned, and nobody wants to be there. So it's happened everywhere, um, you know, uh, San Diego, L A, everywhere throughout the world, Yuma. So um, um, most, it seems to work everywhere else where you have those those multi-use buildings. Most everywhere you go, you'll have commerce in the bottom and you'll have residential on top. And it seems to work, you know, so why wouldn't it work for us, right? So um, that's where we thought, you know, we have to figure out why it hasn't been done in the past, maybe there's something that we don't know about. Um, but to me, it's just, you know, very logical because it works in other places. Um, but I would also like to see more, I think, back in the day, um, here in our, in Callexico, in our downtown. It was a lot more shopping, like more retail, right? So I think I would, I I think it would work a lot more if you have more restaurants, more bars, more cigar shops. Um, and also, you know, retail. Um, because if you're going to have residential upstairs or, you know, I know there's some lots that are that are empty because they burned down, you know, you can build apartments there um too. So if you're gonna have more people living in the area, maybe back in the day, wasn't have, it wasn't such a great idea to have restaurants there. But if you have residential close by, now it might be. Um, because people, you know, wanna come down and and I don't know if you saw our video that we made and and we say, oh, imagine some Chinese, you know, you come down and you're upstairs smelling the Chinese food or something. And, you know, or you wanna come down and and grab a drink and then, you know, you don't have to drive, you walk right back up to your place. So, you know, and that's what I see everywhere else, you know, i- it's not exclusive to retail, but there continues to be retail. And that's good because we have so many business owners that have been there, you know, for like generations, right? And obviously, we want them to continue to be there. But I'm the type of person that, well, that knows that when you have more movement somewhere, you know, you're gonna have less criminal activity because, you know, most people that are in the business of, you know, doing illegal stuff, they don't like to be seen, so they kinda move away um from, but when you, when nobody's really visiting an area, then that's where they hang out. So, yeah, definitely more shops, you know, cigar shops, um, restaurants, any anything. Off offices, real estate, you know, um, we do, we, Lisa did talk, that's why it would have been really good for her to be here because she knows a lot about like the regulations. But um, there's certain, um, she talks a lot about doing like a moratorium on the fees in that area. On the, there's something called impact fees, a- and and there are fees that um are charged by pretty much any city that when you wanna do a new development um in a certain area, the city and the school districts too, they charge an impact fee, which is pretty much, you know, what's your development gonna cause us or, you know, your surrounding areas. So you have to kinda pay for that, yeah, the impact. So, but maybe in that area, you can waive some fees, just kinda to get incentivize people to fill up, you know, or to lease those vacant buildings instead of, before they build new ones. Especially because if you have a vacant building, it's more prone to um, getting burned down. Um, I know for a fact that my insurance um carrier, you know, they always ask, is is your building vacant? And if you say, yeah, it is, it's your policy doubles or triples. Why? Because they know it's a higher risk. So, um, and it is a higher risk and I think we need to work hard to try and save the little history we have left. So, and bring more life to it.
Yeah, and I mean, I get to talk to um, John Moran and Vic Vic Carriola. And they always, you know, when we're driving out to to the games uh for V S N, um, you know, that we always talk about, you know, them growing up here and and, you know, you mentioned, you you mentioned, you know, the downtown and I didn't know there was Steakhouse in downtown and all these cool things that were, you know, downtown.
Was it Steakhouse?
Yeah, and back in, I don't know, like sixties or some, I don't know. Um, so, yeah, you know, it it's, it's, I I mean, even when I grew up here, it was like, we used to go over shopping in downtown. Um, so, yeah, I mean, yeah, there's a lot of history that, you know, needs to get passed on to the next generation.
Right. I mean, every, we need to be proud of it, you know, I know we're a small border city. Um, a lot of people probably don't know where Callexico is located, but the ones that are from here, and I think you know what I mean. Um, the people that come back, like me. um, the people that come back, like me, that, you know, I left and I left for four years and I was in Japan for a year and, and I missed this place and I came back and, you know, I made a life and I I I I raised a family here and I have a business here and, and I love this place, you know, it's, it's, it's terribly hot. But, but it's, you know, people are are nice, they're welcoming. It's good to, to be able to know somebody, I mean, good and bad, because sometimes you don't want to get ready and then you see someone out, right, and you're in your chunk glass. But um, but it it's, the people that stay here have their roots here and we're proud of our city. And I know, you know, we, we get upset when everything around us is growing and they're investing in their history and their downtown and, and we're not. And I love um, old buildings, you know, like the one we have in Alcentro. I just, you know, when I saw it, even when it was all boarded up and, you know, all the paint was coming off, um, I just, I didn't see it that way, I saw it in a different way, I envisioned it eh, differently. So, you know, I, they're just, they, they're so beautiful, you know, these old buildings. So I wish we could save the ones that we have here and bring some life to it, you know, and some good use to it. Especially since we have, um, we don't have a lot of housing. So you could definitely, you know, build some housing there.
Yeah, we've been stagnant when it comes to um, new housing development, yeah, we haven't done a lot. I mean, we're getting that new project over there by.
The apartments?
Uh huh.
Yeah. Yeah, I think a lot of people, that too, we need apartments, um, because there's a market for everything. You know, some people don't want to buy or aren't ready to buy, so we need apartments. And there's a lot of people that that would love to buy and have a home in Callexico, but there isn't any homes. And I have a lot of friends from high school here that live in Imperial. And um, I can guarantee you that if I asked all of them, the majority would say, I would have bought in Callexico if there were homes.
Yeah.
But there weren't.
Yeah. Yeah, um, my brother, my sister-in-law lives in in Peru, she's the only one that, well, my other sister-in-law just moved over there. But yeah, like every time we hung out, they're like, ah, you know, it's too far for us, like.
Yeah.
I mean, it's only like thirty minutes, but it's still like.
But still, you know, if you want to hang out and have a beer, it's far.
It's far, yeah, it's a long drive.
And it's, and it's fun to live in Callexico, you know, you, eh, some people, I I think the the more north you live in, the less you go to Mexicali and when you're in Callexico, it's like, you know, people just go to the barber down there, you know, for whatever reason. It's good, you have a different, you know, um, there's a different environment, you know, as soon as you cross and then you come back. It's a really cool place to live here.
Yeah.
Um, you know, you you get the best food over there and over here especially. Um, but um, yeah, I, it's, I love this place. There's something about it and I just wish that, I hope that I can do something for it. Um, and and that everybody else that gets elected, and that's why it's very important that um, the voters pay attention to who they're gonna vote for, right? And and try to also not only see their qualifications, but also see who's gonna work as a team. You know, who 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 has that attitude I was talking about. Because if you're not gonna work as a team, then, you know, we're not gonna get anything done again. So we can have all the ideas and and all the ganas, you know, to do things. But if if we can't decide and work together, then.
Yeah, it's not gonna work. Nothing's gonna happen, nothing's gonna happen again. Um, so this, I asked this question to pretty much all the candidates. Um, if you met somebody in elevator, what would be your elevator pitch for you to them to so they could vote for you?
Why an elevator?
Well, it's like, I mean.
Do we have elevators in Callexico? Let me see, what would be my pitch?
Or like a two-minute pitch or.
For them to vote for me? Wow, I mean, assuming that this person knows the mess we're in? Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, because if they don't, then I would have to explain everything.
No, no, I mean, they 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 know the situation.
Yeah, assuming they know the situation, you know, I I would just say, hey, you know, I mean, I know everybody says this, like, they'll say, I'm not a politician because nobody trusts politicians anymore, right? And so the first thing I would say is, hey, I'm not a politician, but then if you win, then you become a politician, right? But um, I I, all I can say is, you know what? It it's, it's kind of hard, especially if it's a stranger, to ask them to trust you. Um, but, you know, eh, I'd say, hey, all I can say is like, these are my qualifications. And, you know, I know sometimes, you know, it's boring to say, you know, your, your education and what you've done. You know, um, a lot of people, you know, it's not something that they're gonna be like, oh, yay, wow. But, you know, you obviously have to tell them because you have to, I think that's one of the problems that we ran into before, that we voted for new blood because everybody wanted. We said, okay, let's give new blood a chance, let's give our youth a chance. But then, you know, after we voted, we realized like, oh, my God, this person has never had a job, you know? And yet they're ba- they're trying to manage a two in, eh, two million dollar budget, you know? And I, I don't say that to to demean them. But realistically, if if you're going to make someone responsible over the money that you contribute, you know, to your community. Because we all work very hard, we're a working community, we work very hard, we pay taxes and we want to make sure that our taxes are well spent, you know? And all I can tell the person in the elevator is, I'm gonna look out for your money because my money is in there too and I want to make sure that it's well spent, you know? And I believe um, I, I can do it, I know how to read financial statements. So nobody's gonna, you know, tell me, oh, this is what this means. Um, and I have good ideas and, you know, and and I don't believe I know it all. And whatever I don't know, I am not afraid to ask. Um, so that every decision that I make for you um, is gonna be the best one that that I can think of.
Good, that's good. Yeah, that's a good, that's a very pitch. And anything else that uh, we, I didn't ask you or we didn't talk about that you would like to, you know, mention?
I just want to invite people to go out and vote. It's a very important election, um, not only for our town, but yes, for our town. Because I I don't, I don't know when the last time it was where all five council seats were were in play. Um, I don't know that it ever has happened, um, and I don't know that it will happen again. Um, and it's very important for people to vote. And um, and even when they don't vote, they're making a decision. Yesterday, um, the person that was interviewing, as he said, you know, when you don't vote, you're still voting, you're voting to let the other people vote for you. And so, you know, don't let other people make that decision for you. Go out and vote, um, whether by ballot, if you lost your ballot, you know, go that day to your precinct. Um, there's so much information, if you don't know where your precinct's at, you know, you could Google it, everybody has a smartphone. Um, and um, it's very important, you know, it's, it's, we've got a lot of new um, 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 laws for the state also that people need to be aware of and vote on um, that will affect us, will affect our pockets and will affect our legal system, will affect our rent prices. So it's very people that, it's very important that people go out to vote this election and then, of course, we have a presidential election that's very contested. So um, so I believe that, you know, the best thing I can tell people is, please go out to vote for whoever you want. I would recommend you vote for me and for Lisa and on our, our bracket. And the other bracket, you know, for the people that you believe will work well with us and and that are prepared. Um, but yeah, definitely, next Tuesday, um, you know.
Yeah, if you haven't already mailed in your vote.
Yeah. If you haven't mailed it in, you know, Tuesday, go to your precinct and vote, you know, it's your civic duty. I know they don't ta- teach us this in school anymore, but when I was young, yeah, we have that civic duty to vote. Um, just like, you know, some of us enlist in the military and and others, you know, contribute different ways to our community, to our nation. You know, voting is an obligation that we should all take very seriously.
Yeah, for sure, for sure. All right, well, thank you so much, um, we're fifty-some minutes, uh, a good, it's a good, um.
You think to watch fifty-some minutes?
Yeah, I I, you know, I see it as, you know, if you go to, from here to Alcentro, it's probably like fifty minutes.
Okay.
You know, that's how I see it.
You go in and out and then come back.
Uh huh, yeah. I mean, you you spend twenty minutes in the line and in and out and then.
All right, cuz they just have to listen, right? They don't have to watch.
Yeah, I mean, you can, you can watch or listen, yeah. I I do both, video and audio, so you can do both.
That's cool.
So that's, that's my um, my sweets, but like fifty and hours, like pushing it. But, you know, if you go to Brawling back, it's an hour pretty much, so. Even, or if you're making line, you know, you can listen to what you're making, so.
Yeah.
All right, guys, well, thank you so much for listening or watching and we'll see you guys in the next one. Peace.